Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, they're gonna give it to me and I'm gonna announce why, so I don't screw it up like I did love.
So is that resolution on there as an add-on? I'll listen. She's on her way back, yeah.
Let's come to order, please. Welcome everybody here this morning for this board meeting. If you have any electronic devices, please silence them at this time. I also want to take a second here to introduce two of my lovely grandchildren, Brooklyn and Shaylyn, sitting over there, and they're visiting here during the Christmas time from North Carolina.
We don't know which one, which.
Do what?
Are they gonna stand?
You gonna stand? Stand up back there, Brooke. There you go. Now Shay will turn red, I can tell ya. Anyway, welcome to everybody. Let's go ahead and Ms. Sarway, you do the invocation and the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're so grateful to gather here today to do the business of Walton County. And at this holiest of seasons, we thank you for the birth of Jesus Christ, and we thank you for being able to live in a country where we can practice our religion, whether we're Jew or Gentile, whether we're Muslim or Islam. We thank you for that right and that freedom. We ask that you protect every family that's represented here, and those that are protecting our freedom overseas, we ask that you have a special watch over them and their families. And all this, we ask in thy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, I'd like to acknowledge that Commissioner Meadows is not here this morning. She is with her parents in Tallahassee, trying to assist them over there. And if you will keep her and her family in your prayers. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a couple of additions under the clerk's item. The approved, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the additions to the agenda, under the clerk's consent agenda item, we would like to add to approve the records disposition request. Under administration, Tina Russian with Chelco was here to present a capital credit check to the board, and Mr. Davis has.
And I have a very late add-on. It's a resolution regarding the Mossy Head Industrial Park to essentially declare the highest and best use for the property out there. It's a title issue that we're trying to finish up with Loves.
Okay, got a motion to?
Motion to approve the additions and deletions.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Jones?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Consent agenda, yeah. Agenda and consent agenda.
There you go. And motion?
Second.
And get a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any public comments from anyone in the audience concerning any agenda item? Seeing none, move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, we have, we're gonna celebrate Christmas kinda. We've got two checks to be presented to the board, one from Tina Russian with Chelco and from Tom Conley from the Florida League of Cities. So, we will entertain Tina and Tom.
Tina, you wanna come up first?
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning and for adding me to your agenda as a late item yesterday afternoon and approving that this morning. On behalf of Chelco, I'm excited to be here this morning to present the Walton County Board of County Commissioners with your capital credit check for the checks that we were just recently dispersing to our membership. As a member-owned, not-for-profit electric cooperative, members earn margins through capital credits with Chelco. So any margins that are retained at the end of the year are later returned to our membership in the form of capital credits. And throughout the years, Chelco has an account that they keep up with the member equity and the member ownership in that capital credit account. And then that equity is then later returned to all of our members in the form of capital credits. And this year, I'm excited to share with you that the Walton County Board of County Commissioners is one of more than forty thousand members receiving the capital credit check from Chelco for the year of nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and twelve, or portions of both. So this morning, on behalf of Chelco, I'm excited to present a check in the amount of six thousand fifty-three dollars and fifty-one cent to the Walton County Board of County Commissioners for your membership and your member equity in Chelco for the year of nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and twelve. And thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I present this to you?
Lewis wants to take some pictures. Tina, Tina, what's the significance of nineteen ninety-three?
I was gonna ask that.
With member, with our capital credits, it's typical that the capital credits are returned in the form of margins in twenty-year increments. And so our board elected this year to not only return those capital credits from nineteen ninety-three, but also a portion of two thousand and twelve. So there was a lot of benefit associated with that, and we're excited that the board voted for that approval. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Tom Conley with the Florida League of Cities, and the county has purchased your property insurance from the league for many years, and we appreciate your loyalty. We are also, like Chelco, we are a member-owned nonprofit. And I was just listening to the radio yesterday, and I heard about how homeowners' premiums in Florida are more than double the national average. And that's because of the exposure that Florida has to hurricanes, of course. Well, we just got through our seventh year without having to have, pay for any hurricanes as an insurance company. So wouldn't it be nice if your insurance company gave you back that money that they collected at the beginning of the year? Well, that's what the Florida League of Cities Board has voted to do for the last seven years now. And we've given back a total over those years of fifty-two million dollars back to our members. So I'm happy to bring a check to Walton County for your share of twenty thirteen return of premium, and it is ninety-six thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars.
Those two give us, combined give us over a hundred thousand dollars. Yay. Yay.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
That's it, it wasn't, have something made out. You said that I could absolutely.
It's been made out to me.
Yeah, I understand.
Next item is the Children's Advocacy Center. And I'm sorry, I have difficulty with that word. I'm gonna defer to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, and it's good to see Julie here. Commissioners, we are under, beginning the process of possibly turning over property through Florida statute and our own policies to the Children's Advocacy Center to establish the center here in Defoe-Niac Springs. There are some steps we have to jump through. There's always a learning curve, and Loves has taught me a few lessons, so there's some steps we have to jump through. And I'm asking you today just to allow me to start the process, to get those steps accomplished, so we can do what's necessary to hopefully accomplish the sale of the property or lease of the property to the Children's Advocacy Center.
I thought we were looking at maybe a fifty-year long-term lease, is that right?
Yes, ma'am, yes. All I need you to do is authorize me to start the process.
I will make that motion.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Julie, would you like to make comment?
I would like to say just a few words. First, thank you all for allowing me to come today. And then thank all of you, when I met with you individually, for supporting our vision for the Children's Advocacy Center here in Defoe-Niac. And beyond that, I really learned that you all really are committed to taking care of kids. And you all know this, we've been at the Niceville Center for thirteen years, and we've provided services to thousands and thousands of children over the last thirteen years. And in Niceville, the center is located next to a nursing home, it's in the neighborhood. Because I truly believe that child abuse is a community-owned problem, and I think as a community, we all have a responsibility, not to take care of only our children, but all the children where we live. So, a year and a half ago, we opened a small center on Highway ninety, just to kinda get started. And we wanted them to come into the community and have the community embrace us. And we wanted to bring good things to the community, and I think that has happened the last year and a half. And in two thousand and nine, before we actually started our work in Walton County, we saw eighty children, or sixty-two children from Walton County. And last year, in two thousand and twelve, with us actually being in the community, we saw two hundred and forty-two kids. That's a significant increase by having a presence in a community and engaging everyone to take care of these kids. Ninety-three of those cases were child sexual abuse, thirty-eight were physical abuse, and thirty-seven of those children were witnessed domestic violence. So we definitely know there's a need here in the community for a full-service center. And also, one of the statistics is seventy-nine of those children were between the ages of zero and six. So I think when, you know, it's our goal to build a ten thousand square foot facility here in Defoe-Niac, and we approached y'all about the College Boulevard property. And it really is in sync with what we're doing in Niceville, because it is next to a senior citizen community center. And, you know, it's my vision to engage the senior citizens to help us and for us to help them. It's across the street from a church, and the churches are very much involved in providing faith-based support for the center. And then the community as a whole in that neighborhood can also be a part of helping us take care of these kids. And you all know, and for the people that don't, the Children's Advocacy Center, it's not a house for kids to stay at, but it houses all the agencies that work in child abuse cases, which includes Sheriff Atkinson staff, the Defoe-Niac Springs Police Department, Department of Children and Families, the Child Protection Team that does the interviews. We will have mental health therapists there. And we also will have volunteers at the center to help with these kids. And so when a child has been a victim of abuse, and it's the only reported cases that we see, and statistically, there are two-thirds more kids out there we don't know about, so we have a lot of work to do, that those kids can come to one place to get all the help that they need, to be interviewed, and typically, we like to just do one interview with those kids so we don't have to re-traumatize them. And immediately engage them in services such as the mental health counseling. Because you guys know that with kids, you know, these kids are playing soccer, they're going to ballet, and then they have all this other stuff going on with them. And through those mental health services, even though we can't take away what happened to them, we can definitely give them the resources that they need, that they can go on and be healthy, happy kids, which will be one of us one day, they could be one of you sitting there one day. So, and then the other part of that, which is really important for the community, and Sheriff Atkinson is very, very supportive of the center, and is really tough on people that do things to kids. But part of the CAC's mission is to make sure that people are held accountable for what they do. And we have done a really good job of that over the last thirteen years. So, you know, in closing, the center is about making our community healthy, which is these kids that we're helping. And beyond the children, we also help their families, providing other services for them. And then secondly, is keeping the bad guys off the roads, off the streets. And I think we really have had an impact on the community. And you all today, you know, with voting to move forward with this, are gonna have an impact for years to come. So on behalf of all the kids that we have seen in Walton County, and unfortunately, I know we're gonna see, you know, hundreds more, thank you on behalf of them. And Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you, Julie. I've had the opportunity in my former life to use the CAC in Niceville on some cases that I have been involved in. I am glad to see it come to Walton County. I know it was a long time coming, because there's a lot of logistics involved in trying to get a child victim down there. And some families are not capable of making that transportation trip down there. But again, I'm glad to see it moving this way, and we appreciate it.
We're very, very excited, and y'all have heard my vision is to build it in six days. So it's gonna take a community and all of you with your hammers to do that. So I have the vision, I just need people to help me get it done. So, I hope you all will be a part of the building process, too. So, we're gonna put Defoe-Niac Springs on the menu. It will be the first CAC in the country to build one in six days. Now it's on record, so we really have to.
And Julie, I think we all take the opportunity to thank you for what you do. It's not an easy job, I don't know how you do it, but we commend you for it.
Well, I've told you all, you know, I know that years ago, I learned that we could not save them all. And so, if you thought you could, you could not get up in the morning and go to work. So I do know that what we do really does make a difference for those kids. So, thank you all very, very much for being a part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Yes, press on. Okay. The next item is regarding Empire Trucks. Just a little brief history, some, several weeks ago, Mac Work, City Councilman from Defoe-Niac Springs, called me and asked me to call Keith Snow with Empire Trucks. That Mr. Work was a neighbor, and Mr. Snow worked for Empire. They were looking for a facility somewhere in Defoe-Niac. And being a member of the council, he reached out to Mr. Work, and he was unable to locate a facility, so he thought of the Mossy Head Industrial Park. So that started the ball rolling. So, you have before you a proposal from Empire Trucks to locate a facility in the Mossy Head Industrial Park. Someone said, well, that's the second one proposal you've had in, you know, just a few months. I said, really? It's the second one we've had in twelve years? So, we're certainly excited that we have that proposal, it's staff's recommendation that you approve that conditionally. And those conditions are simply that the facility that we have discussed with Empire will be incorporated into their purchase agreement and timeframes to build that facility incorporated in the purchase agreement, and that you further authorize Mr. Davis to move through the same process as you mentioned with the Children's Advocacy Center in this acquisition of property as well.
Well, I'd be glad to make that motion. I'd like to make a comment, you know, you're right. Was it twelve years ago we started this process? And I think we paid maybe four hundred dollars an acre in switching it. So even at the twenty thousand dollars purchase price, we're making a profit. But yet, that's not what it's all about. To me, Loves was the key to turning to creating some real substantial, permanent jobs in this county. Loves is just the beginning now of this, and then we, I think we have another nibble at the hook. So we have the opportunity to be able to provide hundreds of jobs in Mossy Head. Commend Mr. Enfell, and always you, Larry, it was your vision many, many years ago for this to happen. And.
Well, it's certainly a collective effort, and it takes folks like Mr. Work that will say, hey, we couldn't do it here, how about y'all give it a shot? And Keith Snow with Empire is here, and I'm sure if you have any questions, he'd be glad to, or if he has any comments to make.
I'd like to second the motion that Commissioner Commander has just made. I'd like to comment that Empire Truck has a terrific reputation, and I think will enhance the industrial park that we've got out there. They'll enhance the fact that Loves is in there, and yes, we've got other nibbles, but I think that in and of itself, from what I've researched on Empire Truck Company, I'm very pleased to have them come to our community.
Me, too.
They're looking to spend about four million dollars on a facility, so that is significant. Keith, any comments? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Work, do you have any comments? Okay. Finally?
Finally. We thank you, Mac, for the opportunity of bringing this to you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Planning Department's gonna make just a brief presentation on the local mitigation strategy. And the request, we really don't need any action other than to make sure that we notify those who are a part of this committee that it's very important that we come together and do the work that they're tasked to do. There's some funds that are out there available, but absent the list of priorities presented through the Local Integration Strategy Committee, we're not gonna get consideration for those grant funds. So Renee's just gonna give you a brief update of where we are and what we need to do, and just ask that the board bless this effort and allow us to notify those who are on the committee of the importance of us getting together in the very near future to prioritize those list of projects.
Thank you. Good morning, Renee Bradley, and I'm here representing the Local Mitigation Strategy as the chair. Here this morning to familiarize the board with the Walton County Local Mitigation Strategy Working Group, and to ask the board to acknowledge the importance of the work of this group to Walton County, and to request the support from the board for the participation of this work group to the county departments and other jurisdiction agencies and organizations. The county's Local Mitigation Strategy Plan is required by FEMA and the state to reduce and eliminate the risks associated with natural man-made hazards. These plans must be in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, which is a mechanism for collaboration between the state and local entities, such as the cities, school boards, and utility companies, to mitigate hazards. Without an approved LMS plan, Walton County would be unable for many federal grants. And the LMS plan must be updated every five years to remain in compliance. We have a current adopted plan that meets the current federal and state requirements. Our current plan must be revised in two thousand and fifteen. Additionally, our current mitigation list is in need of an update. For the last two years, the working group has been struggling with this effort. The urgency of this request is based on a notice of funding availability that we have recently received from the state in the estimated amount of one million four hundred and fifty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Additionally, the Florida Department of Emergency Management has contacted us and volunteered to come on January the sixteenth to help us supply for the grants for this money. During this visit, Miles Anderson with the state would also like to visit with each of the commissioners to answer any questions that you have about this program. I'd be glad to answer any questions for the board.
Any questions?
How will these, how will these projects, as you move forward with them, do we have to do work on these projects prior to submitting them? Are they, are they gonna grant us the project, and then we do the work? How's that gonna work?
What they've asked us to do, sir, is brush up our list, was basically their words. So what we need to do is rerank these projects. We have a lot of projects that need to come off this list. They have to meet the criteria of mitigation.
But what I'm saying is, will they approve this project before we do any work on them?
Yes, sir.
Before it's engineered and designed?
Yes, sir. That's why they're coming on the sixteenth, to make sure that the project that we're requesting is available for the grant.
In other words, there's not no upfront cost before we get started to see if we can get it approved?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, our request is that the board would move to allow you to sign a letter to each of the members of this committee stressing the importance of their participation at a date and time prior to that January sixteenth visit from the state, so that we can move forward to rerank and reprioritize these projects.
You need a motion on that, or just direction?
I think a motion would be strong.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bag, oh, well, no, that ain't Mr. Bagby.
Good morning, Michelle Ray, TDC. Mr. Bagby is away in Tallahassee, attending meetings at Visit Florida and FADMO. And I'd like to present some updates for you. The first thing is to remind everyone that tonight, at five o'clock at the Coastal Branch Library, the TDC is hosting the Sports Complex Workshop. We expect a big crowd. We'd also like to announce that we are once again a sponsor of the Freeport Basketball Blowout, sponsored by the San Dustin Hilton. This event is held each year with teams throughout the region, and it will generate more overnight accommodations than any other event that we sponsor in South Walton. The TDC is currently under renovations. We're at about fifty percent complete. Look forward to late January being complete, which will be nice, all the hammering. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions? Alright, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is I'm asking you to adopt a use of facilities policy. We do not have a written policy on how we allow outside groups to use our facilities. The policy is in your packet. I'm working with, will be, and have been working with Public Works to set up a fee schedule for those folks that we will charge for the use of those facilities. And we should have that to you at a later time that we can adopt also as a policy to attach to this one.
We need a motion, I assume?
Yes.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. We came across, the second item I have is we came across a error and an omission in a deed that was prepared to Florida Community Services Corporation of Walton County. I'm asking you to approve the corrective quick claim, or corrective warranty deed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The third item I have is an add-on, is simply a resolution asking you to declare that the highest and best use for the certain property in Mossy Head is for trucks, Tom.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Commissioner Commander, you have any thing?
Well, nothing except to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And I think maybe, and I'm staring at Mr. Davis, and he's gonna put his school board hat on right now. Would it be a good idea for maybe the county commissioners to meet with the school board and us discuss, as we're adding industry and new businesses out in the Mossy Head Industrial Park, how do we prepare our students education-wise? How does the school board and the county commissioners, how can we, you know, make sure we have an adequate workforce for these people? Would it be a good idea to have a meeting between the two boards?
I think the easier and probably more productive way of accomplishing what you're looking for is have Mr. Jones meet with my brother, who runs the Career Development Center. He's in charge of all the academies that are in the high schools and the Career Development Center itself. Let those two talk, and then it might be a good idea for the boards then to meet afterwards.
Boards meet afterwards, yeah. I mean, and I will put a plug in for your brother, since he has been at, it's true, since he's been at the voca, I'll always call it the vocational center. It is amazing the work they do out there. There it is.
Pass along.
That's all I have.
Yep, okay. Mr. Enfell?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I see Mr. McLaughlin's out in the audience, and one of his cohorts, Dusty Ricketts, from the Northwest Florida Daily News, accompanied us on the trip to Hamburg, Germany, to look at Airbus and Lufthansa. And Mr. Ricketts was posting daily blogs, as we noted from over there, and some of them humorous, we might say, but certainly very essential to what we've gone. And what was, as I came to learn when I got back here and saw on the paper, most of the information that, about the trip was already there, and we appreciate that from your paper, Tom. Thank you much. One of the things that seemed to surprise people was the fact that they said, you know, we're looking at five to seven years before we are going to be ready to look at suppliers along the I-ten corridor. And part of it deals with the production from what's going to be in Mobile. At the outset, they're looking to do two airplanes a month in Mobile. And over time, gradually ramp up to four, and then to eight, and then to fourteen a month. And when they get to that point, six, five years down the road, at that time, delivery of supplies and services is gonna be far more critical than just doing two a month. So, we met the head people with Lufthansa, we met the head people with Airbus. We talked to them about the presence of Boeing in Charleston, and Embraer in Jacksonville. And they indeed are interested in the fact that we have people along the corridor uniting to work with them. And they use the term clustering, a little bit different than we use the term clustering, but the clustering concept is the public-private partnerships that go all. but the clustering concept is the public-private partnerships that go all along hand-in-hand, from government, the school systems, and the industries out there to provide not only the necessary goods and services, but to work with one another to make sure that the economy keeps expanding out there. And the thing they told me that just knocked me over was they've got a 12-year backlog of orders for airplanes at Airbus. So, I mean, they're, they're good to go for 12 months. And when we took the tour over there, we were expecting to see kind of like an automobile assembly line of, "We'll get these things done." And we were quite surprised to see that only one or two people were working on an individual hull of an aircraft at a time, as opposed to a lot of people getting together. And they said, "It's kind of like an automobile assembly line that if something goes wrong in your car because we went too fast or something, the light goes on, you pull over to the side of the road and you wait for the tow truck." He says, "When you're up at 30,000 feet, that light goes on, you've got no place to park the plane." He said, "That's why they take a very deliberate, slow approach to getting things done, but that they've got an ever-expanding market." And they've got some terrific videos out of their planes of the future that are gonna be just dynamic. To capitalize on what Commissioner Commander just said, that their school system starts with third grade, and they start with someone going out and teaching kids different designs for making paper airplanes. A lot of fun for the kids. Couple of months later, they'll have somebody come back that's a pilot, talk to the kids. Couple of months after that, an astronaut will come. Couple of months after that, they'll take the kids out to Airbus or to Lufthansa, and they'll put them in one of the simulators, and they'll let the kids, quote, "fly a plane", if you will, via the simulator. So, they get them, get them hooked into it. And their education system through the city of Hamburg and the state of Hamburg provides both the basic education, K through 12, and collegiate education at no cost to the families. Of course, their emphasis is on aerospace, engineering, and all the things necessary to do. I know that Oaklusa County sent a representative to it, and University of West Florida sent five representatives on the trip, and it was very, very impressive. They're looking to see, what do we need to do to design our future education programs so that if we're successful in getting these companies all along the I-10 corridor, that we can support them with future growth and future employment opportunities, which I think is very important. You know, it's, we've primed the pump. We've primed the pump. Nobody's coming back with anybody, "I've got this company coming, that company." But the relationships have been established. Again, the key leaders from the major aerospace industries over there are engaged with us, are talking with us, and we need to be staying in touch, not only with them, but with our neighboring counties as this five-county coalition moves forward to bring in, because what impacts Oaklusa is gonna impact us, and what impacts us is gonna impact Escambia. And I appreciate that I had the opportunity to go over there and represent Walton County.
How was the veiner, Snitzel?
It was good, but they had a lot of potatoes and a lot of cabbage. Any way you wanted it, and that was about it.
Cabbage in any form, huh?
And just one beer.
Just one?
Just one beer.
Just one. All right. Mr. Pridgen?
Yeah, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and everybody be safe over the holidays. A lot of people are gonna be traveling. Everybody needs to be careful.
Well, let me pass this out to each one of the board members. It's in reference to my agenda item. We've got the camisim board that's gonna have some work to do next year. At the present time, Commissioner Pridgen sits on the camisim board, and due to a reelection, he wouldn't be able to do so. So, what I, due to a change in the law, now we also have to appoint an alternate to this. The chair automatically serves on it, but in the event of disqualification or some other issue, then we need to appoint a alternate to serve on that. So, kinda slim pickings here.
I'll make the motion for Mr. Enfil.
Second.
All right. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Well, that takes care of that.
All right.
Easy enough. All right. The only other comment I have is, again, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And if you are traveling during this time, to be safe, a lot of traffic. And go back, put my law enforcement hat on if you're gonna drink and get your designated driver. All right. Other than that, we'll move on in the agenda. Mr. Armbruster?
I'd like to talk about Dikowski and Beethaven Circle up in Unit 6 here in Juniper Lake Estates. I'd like to just go back a little bit because there's new commissioners here. And a long time ago, a long time ago, that particular roadway is where the first homes were built, and one of our commissioners maintained those roads as county roads, those two roads. And for a long time, I came before the commissioners and told them I'd like to have the road where I lived cleared and opened up. It had grown over. Well, I didn't get anywhere, so I spent $4,500 of my money and made the road usable. Now, then, I came in one time later and I found out that those roads were never made, county-maintained roads. And I had to dig up all the documents to prove that that was a county-maintained road, and it was the first two roads that were made, county roads, period, maintained roads. And it rolled along for a long time, and nothing was really happening. And so, then one day, I came to, yeah, I came to one of these meetings, and at that particular time, I had all the documentation to prove that they were the first two roads in that subdivision that were made, county-maintained roads. Well, then, they seen the handwriting on the wall, and I proved it all. So then, graciously, Ms. Commander made a motion at that particular meeting that what we do is go ahead and formally accept these two roads as county-maintained roads, and since it was such a long time already had passed, that we go ahead and pave it. Well, her intentions were very good. And then, of course, someone said, made an amendment to that and said that we'll put them on the paving list. Well, to me, that was fair, really fair. However, years rolled along, and I had to, I couldn't get, I couldn't get any straight answers from the government. And I got the names of the three people here. I have their cards. And I understand that they're no longer working for the county. But I went down to see this gentleman by the name of Starsky Harrell, who was in charge of the roads. And if I'd been a commissioner, he'd have been fired on the spot for what he said to me. But the thing is, is that he just, he said, "You're number 83." And I said, "Sir," I said, "how do you know that it's number 83 when you didn't even look at any of the documents to tell me what the number is on the paving list?" He said, "That's because that's how many roads need to be paved in this county." And he walked out the door. Well, I had no use for that man, period, at all. And those other two, they were his subordinates, so they really couldn't make decisions. So, I still didn't have an answer to when or what number I was to have that road put on the list for paving. So, after Mr. Enfil came into office, I asked him if he could find out what number I have for paving on that road. And he came back to me, and he told me, he said, "Sir," he said, "you're not on the paving list." Can you believe that? Years have gone by. So, I'm here today to ask at least the minimum that you produce a number, and I would like that number to be sandwiched in between the time when I was denied a number for paving. That's the way I would like to see it come down. That's fair. So, I'd like some input from the commissioners.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I did indeed meet with Mr. Armbruster, and after we found out that he did not have a particular number on the paving list, I've met with Public Works. We have a number of roads in far worse shape in the district out there that have gotten to the, to the listing of one through probably eight so far, and we've got many more to do. One of the key things that has been disruptive was the storms we had back in July of this year that washed out a number of roads. We had a FEMA emergency, and our Public Works crews have been diverted to that. What I would like to do is have the opportunity to go back with our Public Works folks and look to see where in the future we can, we can get this. Now, right now, there's a three-year listing, and those are some really severely impacted roads. And I've been to your road a number of times and traveled on a number of times, and I realize at times it's bumpy, but it's in far better shape than a number of them out to the west. But I'd like the opportunity to work with Public Works and see if we can come up with a reasonable number and get back with Mr. Armbruster and see if sometime after the first of the year, we can sit down and come to an agreement.
Thoughts for me?
Would that work for you, Mr. Armbruster?
Thank you.
Okay. I don't need a motion or anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, excuse me. Mr. Armbruster, he'll be getting back with you to see what they can do to work that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Go ahead.
I appreciate Michelle Ray bringing up that school board event. This is the 20th year that event has taken place. This is a sort of a monumental year, given that there's a, and I can't remember, to be honest with you, and I should've checked last night, but it's either 5,000 or 10,000 or there's some big number of rooms that have now been rented directly related to that tournament. I would encourage you to spend at least one day down there. You'll be absolutely shocked. There's 16 boys' teams, teams participating, eight girls' teams over a four-day period. They'll come from Tennessee, Alabama, Louisiana, Florida. And I will tell you, it was born out of a need to have one for small schools. There are always these kinds of holiday tournaments for large schools, but when my brother was coaching at Freeport, he couldn't find one to get in that had, you know, smaller schools in it. So, he jumped off and started this one. I don't know that he knew what he was getting himself into, frankly. But it's grown into a large event. A kid named Duhan that played at Duke has actually played in it. A guy named Coker, who's a backup quarterback at Florida State, played in it at St. Paul's in Mobile. I just encourage you to spend a day, and if you want to volunteer, they'll take any volunteer they can get. It's a massive undertaking when you talk about that many games over a four-day period. You have to have somebody to keep the clock, you have to have somebody to help with the floor, you have to have somebody wipe the floor for sweat. It's a massive undertaking for that many days. And Freeport High School has basically done it with their staff and a few volunteers for 20, 20 years now. So, I'm putting on my school board hat and ask you, just take a day, and you'll be, you'll be thrilled to see kids in that setting. You'll enjoy it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Mary Konoski? Come on up, ma'am. Well, state your name for the record.
Mary Konoski with the South Walton Community Council, and I have a question about an agenda item. I couldn't get out of my chair fast enough when you approved the consent agenda, but this is from a member, item 13-0858, that indicates an agreement with Altel or Verizon, and the site is Inlet Beach. And the manager and corporate secretary of the Inlet Beach Water Systems is asking if that's the correct location because they, as far as she knows, does not have an agreement with Verizon.
My understanding of the agreement, it was to actually add equipment to an existing site and tower.
Okay.
And they have to have our imprimatur on their ability to add equipment to an existing site and tower.
However, what she is saying is, and I'm just reading her inquiry so I can respond to her, that the tower at Inlet Beach doesn't have an agreement with Verizon, and she's wondering if instead it's not the tower at Peach Creek.
Actually, the agreement was with Altel, who's now Verizon. So, I will check and make sure, but I'm almost certain they do.
Okay.
I'll check and make positive issue. Yeah, I wanted to say it was very, very recently we had the agreement signed.
Okay. And is there some way I can follow up so I can get back with the member?
Your call.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none?
Just, staff, anything?
Does staff have any questions?
Just, if I might, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of staff, we want to wish the board and the public a Merry Christmas. I want to say thank you for your support over my time over the last several months and for staff, what you've done for them over the past time you've been in office. We're looking forward to an exciting year next year, ready to get it kicked off. So, we want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and thank you for the support you've shown us over the past year. We also want to make the board aware and remind staff that we're having a open house and lunch at Admin from 11 to 2:00. We've got plenty of good food, and we look forward to each of you coming there.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? I want to attain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Carries.